All right, Councilman Anderson's on the phone. He's in Fort Bragg still?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So can I get an approval, motion for approval of the November 12th, 2024 meeting minutes?
Solemn.
Just got a motion by Councilman Coler's.
Second.
Second by Councilman Fisher. Any discussion? All right, can I get a vote, Councilman Fisher? Councilman Hill, yes. Councilman Gill?
Yes.
And yes, okay. All yes.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Approval of the meeting agenda? I have one item that I need to add under mayor action items. It's for a housing authority appointment.
Speaker of the House.
Adams got one.
Mr. Mayor, I have one regarding the application for the EIP.
I'd like to comment on the action item now that you have.
Yes.
Unfortunately, it should be the administrator doing all the action items. All you can do is discuss your.
No, this is a, this is an appointment to the board. That's a mayor.
That you can do, but you got also down here that if you want to discuss travel policy and all these other things. That's something that the administrator should do is you don't do action items. We've been went over this before. So I can't approve this until the administrator been here 30 days now. He should have been well equipped with what's going on for this meeting tonight.
Yes, and he is, and he's prepared for it.
He's the one gonna have to do this, not you, so.
Well, I'm gonna discuss it, he can help me with it. So we're working through it, so.
Stop, something there.
Yes.
We went over this before. If he was gonna, you don't need to be discussing the action item that he's gonna be dealing with. Our action item, now we've been went over this before.
Yeah, that was a type of mine's discussion. So that action item comes off of there, so.
Okay, all your discussion, so I wanted to make sure then.
Yep, all mine's discussion.
Okay.
Anything that he's got, he can put on, put on.
Gotcha.
All right, but the only thing I have that's an action item is a housing authority appointment, so.
Gotcha.
Question.
Yes.
Adam, what you're presenting about the EIP, the city incentive program?
Yes, sir, and I'll explain on the action item.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to add a personnel matter for later.
For executive session?
Executive session, yes.
Okay. Okay, Danny, any further discussion?
I approve those, uh, agenda, knowing that all yours is a discussion item.
Yes, okay, all right.
That's my motion.
Second. Second, all right. All right, can I get any further discussion? Does, yes, David? Yes?
Yes.
Andy? Anderson?
Yes, I'll put it on mute and so you don't hear any background noise, so it takes me a second.
Okay, yes, yes, and yes, okay, all right. Unanimous, all right? Well, somebody give me the citizens list and we'll go through that. All righty, all right, so we've got two that want to talk. I'll read the rules of decorum again real quick. The purpose of the rules of decorum is to foster an atmosphere of civil and courteous discourse, even and especially when discussing contentious topics at all meetings held by the city council. All public comments should be as follows. Each speaker will be given three minutes during the public comment period. Each speaker will direct his or her comments to the mayor or presiding officer and not to any other individual present. Each speaker will refrain from personal attacks, foul or abusive language, and will maintain a civil and courteous manner and tone. Members of the audience will respect the rights of others and will not create noise or other disturbances that will disrupt or disturb the meeting. Any violations of the rules of decorum may result in the violator being removed from the premises. Dr. Latasha Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here because I am seeking clarity and I have concerns about the fire training center that is being planned to be relocated on Third Street. Um, and don't get me wrong, I am in total agreement that that area out there needs to be cleared on the main thoroughfare. However, I have a question about why was this particular parcel of land chosen when it's clearly zoned for residential, commercial, and industrial uses? Uh, why not a more isolated area in the county? Uh, located, if you recall, located near Third Street, there are four businesses, a self-storage facility, a bed and breakfast is on the corner, there are four homes, and Berry is in the back of this piece of land. It's also my understanding that this particular parcel of land was donated to the county by, donated to the city by the county. It's also my impression that the action concerning this property was going to be tabled until tonight because there was a discrepancy. Was it gonna cost $30,000? Was it gonna cost $160,000? Yes, I'm driving up and down that area. I see that there's constant work on the property. There have been city trucks out there, and yesterday around noon, there was a fire truck. It was stated last meeting that you really had to look hard to find it. Well, I don't. I go out in my backyard and in between the spaces of the trees, it's about 200 yards from my front. Also, there's Mark's Tabernacle Baptist Church there. There's the Martin Luther King Memorial Drive, so there's a lot going on, and it is actually a conduit between the North Bypass and Lexington Avenue. Interesting also is I don't recall a vote being taken to receive that property from the county. And I think at minimum, in order to ensure that we're in compliance with the gratuities clause in the Georgia State Constitution, that would at least need to happen. So I also have a question, if this is going to be that area, which I'm definitely not in agree, in agreement with it being there, uh, would there be any beautification done to this property described as an eyesore? Because what we would not want to do is place it there and lower the property value in that area. Okay? Also, I'm very concerned, has the city purchased additional liability insurance in the event that something cataclysmic were to happen? Because Hurricane Helene, no matter how prepared we think we are, something catastrophic can happen, and it can weaken us when something unexpected takes place. As previously stated in other meetings, there's serious issues with the water system. There are leaks in the infrastructure, so what if enough water could not get to that site? Is there a safety plan in place? Should there be an accidental explosion in this area? Because 20 to 30 yards from the proposed area, there's a painting body shop. I think you all know all the chemicals that are involved when you're painting cars and things. What if toxic fumes were emitted into the air? Would the city be in position to refute any claims that the emissions from this building caused people to develop asthma, emphysema, or lung cancer? Or would you be able to refute claims that carcinogens passed into the food supply? If there were chemicals spilled, would there be an evacuation plan? We have a lot of elderly and disabled people in this area. So again, I am merely seeking clarity onto what went on, how this unfolded, what's the funding source, and you know, how are the residents and property owners and patrons in that area going to be notified and going to be reassured that in the haste to relocate this building, that safety has not been compromised? Thank you so much for your time. Lastly, uh, city administrator, I have my open records request for the documents concerning this land.
All right, Adrian Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, Administrator, the lawyer, and the council members. Um, I'm here on the behalf of the United Community Awareness Program. Um, we will be celebrating our 26th, um, annual MLK celebration on January, starting January the 18th, 19th, and 20th. So I'm inviting the members of the city councils, the mayor, uh, the administrator, and all that, you know, all people that are represented here today. Um, I have some letters here for you all, and I would like to present it to you all. And while I say I'm gonna kill two berries with one stone, um, I know that all the council members and the mayor and the administrator received a, um, URA package as far as the budget. So you all have it, I know you all gonna look at it, and I know we're gonna get some funds, right? So here's your letter. And it's addressed, oh, you have your own personal one. If you don't have a copy of it, I have a copy of it. You have a special note in there. And if you need any information, I know my three minutes are not up, but if you need any information about the MLK, please feel free to contact me. All the services will be held here at the Pope Center. Um, the breakfast will be held next door in that little spot over there. The Sunday services will be held in the ballroom. And we will actually be having a parade starting on Whitehall Street, and it will actually be dispersed behind the courthouse of town. We're gonna have our judges as well. And I see a famous person in this room tonight, and I'm gonna go ahead and put them on the spot, so we need some coleslaw. Okay, she knows exactly who I'm talking about. The coleslaw was the bomb last year. So we, um, I know Councilman Anderson is not here, but I do have his letter as well. And he was one of our, um, judges. So we hope that he can actually participate with us, as long with all the rest of you all. So Administrator, this will be your first, but I do expect to see you there. Thank you all for your time, okay?
Thank you much.
Yeah, I'll do that again, but you don't have to say anything.
It's okay, I got it, John.
All right, so in your packets, community board authority reports. Uh, I just got the WCCPs today. I don't know if Yoshi got them put in your packets or not, so. For WCCP, I just got her report today, did you get that? No, all right, she sent it out, all of us emailed today, so. And 911, I got it today too, so. They're not in, if they're not in there, I'll make sure you get them today, this evening, or email them to you. All right, city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few items. First, before the council tonight is a proposal to adopt or ask for coverage uh, under a new mandate from the state regarding insurance. Uh, essentially, the, uh, oh, I apologize, I want the wrong one. Yeah, the Action Listen Act, that's correct. Um, so essentially, what this would be requiring is that we provide additional coverage to your first responders, your firefighters. Under, you'll remember, a few years ago, we had to add cancer coverage to our policy. Uh, this is similar in the same vein. Uh, there's not really a lot of choice from the city standpoint, but this policy would meet all of your state requirements. Um, so obviously, if you have any specific questions, I'm limited in what the Girma policy does, but all of my clients so far have adopted this policy because it does, like I said, the state of Georgia is requiring us to adopt it.
Question, um, how much is this gonna cost?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I know it's the cheapest you can get it done.
What's the cheapest?
Whatever Girma provides.
Government supply, uh, it was $3,500.
Per employee?
Did you?
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Um. Let me see, it's not on. It's, we have, I think it's like 25 firemen plus the volunteers. And we have to cover the firemen and the volunteers. And the quote that I received was like $3,500 for them.
For all of them?
Yeah.
For all, per year or?
Per person?
No.
No, for all of them, right.
Not per person.
Continually?
Yeah, I'll, I'll email you.
Yeah, I haven't seen any, any figures for that, so.
Is that for counting volunteers too, or just all the city?
This, this is everything that falls under the city's on.
Yeah, we don't count, any of the county fire departments would not.
But the county would also be requiring this, all the counties have to do as well.
Yeah, so, all right, so we need a motion. Hang on, before we move, can we get a motion?
Also, I wanted to just kind of come in and follow up with Councilman Mahoney. Uh, I would like to know that number too, and I think some research should have been done to make sure we know those numbers would look like, will that be coming out of our budget? And I think you cleared up the fact that it's for the whole group and not just an individual. So I charted down $25,000 for the whole group, is that, or did I get it right?
No, yeah, no, no, she, I think she said $2,500?
Hundred.
$2,500, yeah, that's for, whole group for annual, yeah.
And?
And, and that's not a, that's not a definite yet, is it Yoshi? Because Girma has to do the.
But I, I will have to contact you all probably through email to send you that information and to see if you'll allow us to sign off on it, because I think that deadline is like the 19th.
Okay.
In order for them to receive the coverage by January 1st.
Yep.
And this only offered to firefighters and first responders? It's not, it's not something that we can offer to, um, the other workers to deal with sanitation and work with water and sewer?
No, the, the state law specifically say.
This is the minimum requirement. This is the minimum requirement. You could add additional coverage to other, um, other employees that fall under. This is what the state requires. The coverage is, is a, adding for post-traumatic stress disorder for a period of 10 years, one-time. Uh, coverage for any action that someone might experience as a result of their service. Um, I don't know if this would be necessarily for all employees, but it could be a question the next time your insurance comes up. You may want to consider including this for other officials as well. I don't know if Girma is covering writing a policy that would meet other employees. I know that they did this for those required by Georgia law to receive the coverage. But this is the minimum standard. You certainly could go above if they offer that coverage.
All right, so need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign that form and get it out to them?
Mayor, I make a motion to.
Make a motion, Councilman, Councilman Hill, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign off on that and follow up with council with the actual contract.
Okay, can I get a second? Second by Councilman Gunner, okay. Any further discussion? Yeah, no choice. Councilman Fisher?
Approve.
Councilman Hill?
Approve.
Councilman, Councilman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilman Coler's, Councilman Mahoney, unanimous, okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, Adam.
Uh, the next item before the council tonight is an authorization, another resolution authorized the mayor uh, to sign and complete the chip grant application. I don't have any specifics, um, if the Administrator does, but, um, there would be, incur a $500 application fee. This would be for the, uh, the new grant period of 2025. Uh, if you've received chip grant funds already, it would be for, wouldn't really do that, since it would be for a new grant. Right, this is for the restoration, it's for the restoration grant. The Crystal, the basis authorized her $500 for the grant fee. And I think she spoke, she spoke to me about it right.
Are we in line to apply?
Yes.
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 We are in line to apply?
Yes, Crystal has completed the requirements for the previous chip and we, we are accepted.
What this would, what this would do is this would actually give, and I'm just speaking up, I have a mic. What this would do is this would give Crystal also an ability to write as an add-on with the grant, further certifying her in those that know grants worth of point systems. So it would raise her point system up, so that the next grant that we applied for, we wouldn't have to pay a grant administrator, she would be able to do it. So in essence, it'd be a two birds with one stone package.
And in the past, whenever these chip grants have been written, the, um, the grant administration has been written inside the grant. Uh, but now, they're no longer that you write, the grant administrator be in the grant, so. Uh, I think there's gonna be a fee of $30,000 to write the grant. Um, I think she's contracted with, um, one of the grant writers from the regional commission. And we've worked with the regional commission before, they're very vested in the work that they do, very thorough. Comes highly recommended from DCA, as far as DCA grants and DCA regulations. Excuse me, so, um, as she explained to me, um, it's, and if we get the grant, that $30,000 could be paid over the course of the four years of the grant. And the $500, we also, uh, $500,000 would go towards, you know, needy houses that needed renovations. Pretty much like we do the owner occupant rehab right now.
Okay, can I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion, Councilman Mahoney, thank you. Can I get a second? Second, Councilman Hill, any further discussion? All right, Councilman Fisher?
Approve.
Councilman Hill?
Approve.
Councilman Gunner? Councilman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilman Coler?
Yes.
Councilman Mahoney? Unanimous. Councilman Mahoney? Yeah, all right, unanimous, all right. All right, go ahead, Adam.
Mr. Mayor, there is one more item that's not, that's added to the agenda tonight. This body, I think in August, we had some conversations regarding a proposed EIP grant through DCA. Uh, and specifically, there were some questions raised at the time that this body investigated. Later, he came back and decided to move forward with the grant. We are actually running up against a deadline for that grant. We've been working with, um, the grant writer, and you are going to hit a deadline before your next meeting. Uh, you'll have to hold a public hearing before that meeting, which has been scheduled for December 18th. Um, at that public hearing, you'll receive public comment, you'll include that information with your submission to DCA. Uh, the request for this body would be, instead of having to call a meeting after that public hearing, allowing the mayor to sign a resolution after that meeting that shows the meeting was held and can be submitted to meet your January 2nd, 2025 deadline. Uh, so again, you're, you're giving him the authorization upon the public hearing, which would be how you would make that motion.
All right, this is grant for again?
This was the, I believe, a sewer line expansion into the, um, the property that currently has the wood processing facility. And it had the, the EIP component was that you had to, um, the grant was provided because it was gonna create jobs.
Yeah, right.
So that's, I think this, we, we discussed it at a meeting.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
What question?
Motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fisher, motion by Councilman Coler, go ahead.
Just a question, um, I know in the, in the, um, course of the conversation, we talked about, um, the repayment. I think we talked about that being over, um, a period of 10 years. Have we execute a contract to have the payment of the money? The city's putting up, I think it's $150,000, I don't think that's what it is, it's still $150,000.
Yeah, um, there's been one drafted but not entered into. Uh, I believe it would be after, if the grant is awarded, that's when it would be the appropriate time to take up, before the city accepted the grant. I think we discussed having that in place upon, this is just the application. Uh, but yes, I, I know one's been drafted, and I don't know that it's made it to the, um, the owner of the property, but I know on our end, we have something together, so if you do get the application, you'd be in a position to move on that next, so.
And the deadline they're approaching that we have to take action on now is for?
The application itself. So that's January 2nd is the deadline for applying.
All right, any other discussion?
I would be compiling the information and putting that grant together, again.
Yeah, Will, what's the, that would be? So Janet Parker was the one that was heading it up, and I know that Michael, I can't think of his last name, that was writing the grant. So that, when y'all brought that thing back in, it was August when y'all signed the $150,000. So in August, when that was signed, essentially, we basically kind of got the cart in front of the horse, so to speak. With, that should have been the first line, then a public hearing, then that piece of paper that we signed. So we kind of did it in reverse order, which is okay, because we've already gotten the schedule. I've already gotten the schedule for the public hearing, and then once you have that hearing and this is signed after that, then everything should be, ball should be rolling definitely. And then we'll know whether or not we qualify for the grant. It's that million dollar.
Right, so, um, the grant debt, so January 2nd is the deadline for us to meet our obligation.
To file.
To file for.
To file for.
So when would he, when would he know whether or not they receive the grant?
That, I don't have that exact information.
Um, the other part of it is, I know what up that we talked about, um, that was water and sewer. Oh, the other one was, um, electric, you know, coming on with being a, um, consumer choice. Have we talked with ECG to make sure that we'll be able to push that part, because we wanted to make sure everybody wants an electric customer, because of the significant benefit they will be getting for the infrastructure.
Yes, sir, uh, what I've done is I've already worked with both, uh, ECG, I worked with their CEO, and I've already got a meeting scheduled, so we can try to get their attorney to help us facilitate that. It's gonna be a situation where you have Georgia power from us, as we know. They're saying it's light kind, it is a light kind business once removed, right? So we qualify in two of the three situations, but we should be allowed a choice on customer choices there. And the customers already said verbally committed that they would like to choose us and go with us. So if that be the case, that would be a great benefit to the city.
As we prepare the contract, is there something that we could put in the contract as well, or?
Um, I can talk with you afterwards, um, it's not as simple as that, but I, I can explain it more. If we're able to get it, it would help diversify our energy costs greatly, which I'm sure everybody that's a citizen understands with clean smart, would that be a draw? You know, we really like to diversify the business and have some other businesses that have heavy draw to help. It'd be really good, yeah.
Yes, we're definitely working on it, it's hard.
And it is also important, so the employer incentive program is very important with our community, because not only would it create jobs, but the jobs that he's gonna create there, I think they advance from between $24, $26 an hour. And because he will begin the employer incentive grant, he'll be held to paying those type of salaries, so that's why it's very important. And hopefully, he gets the grant, but at the same time, it's your reimbursement back into our community as well.
Yeah, definitely. And he's very excited about it too, yes, Councilman Hill?
You also, we also had early conversations about this also, but I don't recall if we said, uh, we're that 140, I thought it was $140,000, $150,000 would come from, that we did vote and approve to move forward. So I do understand, Administrator, what you're saying, we kind of like doing it reverse to make sure we line it up correctly, and that's a good thing. But my question is, where is that $150,000 gonna come from again? Uh, what budget or what, no, what we're gonna?
I couldn't speak to that until we, till we decide it's actually gonna happen. And once it happens, then we'll figure out where.
Because that's some of the conversation we've been having about making sure certain things are in there, the time to pay that back as well as employees, what kind of numbers will they be paid and so forth and so on? That's just some conversation, side conversation that we've had over the last couple of months about it. I'm all for it, but just want to kind of know what window or what door those dollars will be coming from.
Yes, sir.
And that we do it, you know, legally, yeah.
And once, like I said, once we get to that point, we'll, we'll all sit down and talk about it, that's, you know, we have to discuss it.
Properties is gonna be a 2025, maybe it'd be a budget. We'll have to talk about the budget later.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
We're gonna get market.
All right, so got a motion, the second, any further discussion? Can you get a vote, Councilman Fisher? Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Councilman Gunner? Councilman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilman Coler?
Yes.
Councilman Mahoney? Unanimous, all right.
Mr. Mayor, from my last item, I know that Councilman Coler's indicated a personnel matter for executive session. I will have one short, big one to discuss.
Okay. Okay, moving on. So mayor discussion, um, housing authority appointment. I was advised the other day, I've got a resignation from May Linda Miller. She is coming off of the housing authority we appointed her first part of the year, and therefore, I'm gonna now appoint Lisa Fisher. I've talked to her, and she's interested in it, and she has a lot of construction development and project development type training, so, and education, so we're gonna move forward with that one. The travel policy, working with the attorneys now to work up the travel policy and approve the plan for continuing education and budget. As you know, in the past, it's been kind of a go, 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 so we're gonna look at setting an actual limit to it. I think we said $3,500, and we may, may have to bump that up just a little bit, but I'm trying to wait to see how the prices are this year for some of these conferences. I know the conferences are very, very expensive, um, and the classes themselves are even more expensive this year than were last year, so we're looking at that, so I'm working with, uh, the attorney now to, to work on that for it, so. And as soon as we have that policy in place, I'll make sure we email it out to you so you can look at it and we can get it approved first part of the year. Carter and Slope contract, you know, with the ARPA funds, we have to, by the end of December, we have to have all those ARPA funds allocated out, and we've, uh, agreed in the past to work with Carter and Slope to go ahead and start working on our infrastructure with the water and pipes, and. Will, you got anything you want to talk about that?
Uh, yeah.
So, um, so that's, that's where our obligation of the remaining ARPA funds are gonna go, is that. And Will's trying to get with Kathy now to see an exact amount, uh, since we've paid off some of the, the funds that we had with the GFA loans, we're trying to get an exact amount on the drawdowns for the ARPA, so we should have that in the next day or two, but just to let you know that we are gonna oblige. But just to let you know that we are going to allocate the rest of those ARPA funds to Carter and Slope for the infrastructure.
What infrastructure project Carter's working on?
Right now, they're working, they're still working on the lead base. And then they're still, they're working on replacing some aging pipes. It's in your packet. This is what we talked about previously, about working on some... I know there's the lead project out there, and then they're also working on infrastructure for the pipes and leaks and things like that. So, and we had another major leak today, so we're all working on those, so.
So they put in a... So the $400 and some thousand dollars that we...the grant that we got, this right here was a written grant. The grant that we signed back in June, I think it was like $400 and some thousand dollars. I always wonder why I'm asking this, because when the resolution was written up from the president about ARPA funds, we allocated all that money to infrastructure, federal money to infrastructure that... And I'm not saying that the infrastructure shouldn't be addressed. What I'm saying is that none of the money that was outlined in the resolution has went back into our community. I think that, you know, I can go along with, how much money we talked about? I think it was like $300,000 and some thousand dollars that's left out of the ARPA funds. How much is it?
No, it's like, and this, don't hold me to this number, because again, I tried to verify today and could not get an exact number. But it's somewhere in the ballpark. We said it was one thing, and Anne said it was a different number. And that's because the drawdowns haven't been recorded on the ledger side. So the way I'm figuring it, I think it's somewhere closer to 70.
$70,000?
Yeah, it's left in that, and it's in that. Because that was, you got to think, that's 20...
$20,000.
$20,000 pulled out for the citizens for the hurricane relief. Those checks, that came out of that. And then there was a bunch of the drawdowns. I know that, so Anne's pay comes out of that as well. So I know that, I know that was one of the drawdowns that had to be, it still was, yes, that happened. So that still has happened. And then there was another thing in there. So that balance is not exactly, when you look at it, it looks like it's 140, but it's really more like 70.
Well, I was saying it was 300 and some, because when I got with Kathy...
It was 480 or something like that, or was it 4?
No, it was 1.3 million, 1.2 million.
I'm talking about this year.
This year. Well, we had left over this year.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're saying you don't have track of who drawed down the money? You don't have a list of when you drawed the money down, that's what you're saying?
Not that I don't have track of anything.
Who's supposed to have track of this?
Well, again, we have track of it, it's in the system. I just don't have the exact number.
If it's in the system, and you draw down, somebody know how much money it is. Well, what system is in that we don't know?
It's in Edmunds.
So we can't get it out of Edmunds?
Money itself. All right, so Edmunds is a platform that we work from, okay? General ledger accounts are created inside of that platform. Just so you guys know, I learned this four weeks ago. So that was, that's the platform we use to operate operating system. Now, the finance department, i.e. Ms. Kathy, would be drawing down off of that balance based on what Ms. Anne asked her to do.
Correct.
So the difference was, is when, through the transition of Jerry, Sherry, now to me, there's a lot there where her accounting, her numbers in the general ledger didn't match what Ms. Anne said about she... We had a bigger number. So there was a drawdown that needed to happen on the accounting side of things, on general ledger side of things. It just hadn't been put in there. And that could be a processing thing, it could have been, it was nothing egregious, it just hadn't happened yet.
So, so, so I guess this is mixed up, because back in July, was it July, August? I met with Water and Sewer, because we was talking about the budget, making sure we was on track with budget, what projects that was actually left out, that was out. And I think it was some pumps that was purchased with the ARPA funds. And it came up to be like $900 and some thousand dollars. And I asked our Water and Sewer Treatment Director, you know, is this going to complete the project? And he was saying, yeah, he felt like it was going to complete the project. So then, you know, when that number came up, I went there. Kathy said, hey, he's saying he's going to need $900 and some. Do we still have that money in the account? And she said, yes, the money's still in the account. I'm thinking, well, we took that number away, it left like 300. So that's where, when I'm saying 300, that's where I got the number from, that it was the pumps that we, the governing body, had agreed to spend the ARPA funds on. I don't know anything else besides the pumps that we agreed as a governing body to spend the money on. So now, the pumps came in over, you know, what the number was, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I just know when I was doing checks and balances with the pumps, when I met with him about the budget.
Weren't those the pumps that, that was back like a year and a half ago? That was, that he was going to have to replace? And it was originally, they said it was like a right at a million dollars? And then they got them a little bit cheaper and stuff, so, yeah, so. So, yeah, I just, I remember that.
We can pull a, I mean, we can pull a complete transaction on that account.
Because to go from $300,000, I'm thinking in what, you know, Kathy's the finance director. Confirmed with her, and what he says that he spent to go from that to Anne says she need a drawdown, and now we at $70,000, I think we need to, just investigate, just make sure, you know...
In full transparency, as far as I know, because I looked at it today, because like I said, I wanted to see myself. Ms. Kathy was out today, but I looked at it today, and that's what I'd like, there's some discrepancies inside of Edmunds. And I'm no, I'm no professional with Edmunds yet. You know, I'll be the first one to tell you that. So I'm still learning that system as well. However, there, you know, the numbering system, I know there's some things left to be put in there that hasn't been put in on the general ledger side, just because the numbers don't add what either one of them said in my visual. But that's also me knowing that, and that wasn't, I just didn't pull the transaction. I have no idea what we were going to talk about that account tonight, so.
Well, I know you said it had to be finalized by the end of the... We have to reappropriate what we're going to do with the money.
December 19th, I think, is the deadline date on it, so, yeah. So, we got, I mean, we've got, we've got a couple of days. We can definitely get those numbers and stuff, so.
It's, the wording is obligated.
Yeah, obligated. So it's not spent, just obligated to it. So, so if we put it to infrastructure, then we can say, okay, we obligated it to that, and that's where we're planning to spend it.
Yeah, and, you know, we read the resolution, it said it should go in communities, black and brown communities to address regress. And, you know, I think we need to find some type of way to give some money back into our community in some type of beneficial way that the city can see a great return out of the investment that we made, but...
Well, I think the $20,000 that you made a motion for went a long way. I mean, it didn't earn a lot, but it was, you know, helped some, so, yeah. Yeah, so, you know, so, and then if we find that some of these funds, we can use it some other way, then we can definitely look into that. But as long as we obligate it for something, then we can say, and we'll have final numbers in the next day or two. Kathy wasn't here today, Will wasn't able to get that, so, so we'll get that for you, so. All right, so moving forward, the forensic audit. Everybody's seen the forensic audit. And just so you know, the forensic audit kind of gave us a guideline of what recommendations were needed and where we needed to stand on that. And I think it was, it was eye-opening for some of us. It was, we knew a lot of things were going on, but then we, you know, I think it just kind of brought us all together on what we need to correct. Are we going to correct these things overnight? No, we're not going to be able to correct them overnight. But I can tell you that we've already started diligently working on financial policies. We've started working on a different, a lot of different other policies, too. So I think that, you know, bringing policies forward to the committee starting in January, we'll start looking at the financial policies, the spending policies, the travel policy, and move forward with that. And then if you have any recommendations that you would like to make sure you get with the city administrator for any of the topics that were mentioned in the audit, and let them, let him know so that we can work on them. He's been pulling things, I've been pulling things, and a lot of things we've already started working on behind the scenes. But like you said, we're not going to bring policies and procedures till we have them, you know, pretty much in place or written out where we can present them to the council. So any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that was found in the audit, which we had discussed last month, and I brought it up, is critical to any organization that the HR, Human Service Department, not only just to cover the workers, but also it covers the employer, which is the city. So to my understanding, we, I've had some conversation with our city, current city administrator regarding that. You're talking about about, what, 80, 90 employees, a little bit more? Is that they deserve also to make sure every benefit that is eligible for them, that is due. And so I, again, want to raise the concern. I heard you say that we've looked at all of these, and you're working on them. But I think we need to prioritize where we're going to start working. I mean, it was 22, 24 different findings.
Right.
And it was, you know, just right out embarrassing when you, when you look at it. And this body here sits here on a monthly basis saying, let's do this, let's do that. And it goes undone. And so I think that when you begin to, administrator, when you begin to prioritize that finding, I'm hoping that your team would start putting together an HR, whether it's a person, whether it's a department, but it's going to benefit the city as a whole. And so that's my comment on that, Councilman Mayor, we definitely need to move forward.
And I would, I would have to disagree with you a little bit on us not getting things done. I think over the course of the last 11 months, we've probably accomplished more than, and been more united with it than any other time in city's history. So I'm very proud of that. And I think we've worked really hard at working together to get things done. You know, we've approved a HR position by talking to it. Will's already got some applicants, you know. It's not one of those you want to jump in and hire somebody, you know, right away. You want to make sure that you get the right person, and Will's already started working on that. We're working on travel policies, we're working on other different policies. We've started some internal policies for cash counts and surprise cash accounts and stuff like that, so. And Will's been working diligently with the finance director to make sure that, you know, the financial portion of all those complaints or those findings are taken care of immediately. So, so we are, we are, we are getting there. And we can't, you know, rush into stuff, but we are getting there. And I think we're doing a great job, so, not to pat us on the back or anything like that, but, you know, we've been working together to make sure the city's running well. And I think we've done some, some good things. And I think we're going to continue to move on, doing some great things, so. So, yeah, thank you for that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is my last comment on that.
Go ahead.
I'm not here to debate with you. I hope I did not give you the explanation that I would not doing what need to be done. All I'm saying is, is that the findings that we paid $35,000 for was supposed to have been a forensic audit, and then come to find out that it wasn't. And so I think one of the council member asked at that particular time, who made the change? If no changes was made, well, then it should have been a notation to council that we're not getting what is quote-unquote a forensic audit. We getting a detailed system audit that lets us know where we stand as a governing body. But basically, every category, and everybody knows, every category, that was findings that needs to be improved. And so whether we start with HR, whether we start with the checking system, balance and checking system, I'm just saying what this council seat would prefer. Now, you all have, you know, y'all vote to do what you want to do and say what you want to say. But it was embarrassing to me for us to pay someone, and they come to tell us things that we've been talking about at this time for the past two years. And we still, to this very day, I have not been informed of any applicants as for your HR that you're talking about. I asked at the council meeting, what about our 2025 budget? I was told that I would get some information yesterday, which was, well, today, Thursday, last Thursday, yes. And I haven't received, now, y'all probably get information, but I have not received that. And this is what I go on, documentation. That's what I read over. So, so again, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm done with it. You, you, until, Will, as I told you, you know, you run it the way you want to run it, but you got to have a team around you. And it don't seem like you getting much help, seem like you getting more dots thrown than, than help, so.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I, and just so, rest, rest at ease, I agree with you. HR is one of the most important positions, I think, for any organization. Just like in that meeting last week, we talked about, you know, every business in the world runs that way. The findings, it is, it is kind of hurtful as a citizen to see the findings and then, and then go, okay, these are things that should be addressed. Absolutely, things that should be addressed every day in every business that we see. So I promise you, that is one thing that we are working on, is finding the right individual for that position. Want to make sure that that person not only is trustworthy, but also has the integrity for that role that can facilitate it correctly. So we don't want to rush into that position. When it comes to all the other, the little sidebar procedures, like financial things and like, you know, with cash policies, making sure people, we have to really work on our handbook. I don't know if anybody's even seen our handbook. I'm not sure that you guys actually voted on the current handbook. That's in here or there. There's some things in there that really need to be addressed. And I've been looking through that just about every day, finding something different every day that I look through it. So there's a lot there that can be changed, and not only fixed, but just adjusted, so that we can be more efficient and more, you know, productive with the money that we are spending. And that, so that is ultimately my goal, is to, everything they found, I had already seen walking through the door. I think Bruce would tell you, the things, same things they found, I literally sent those to them, every one of them. So, and I didn't even have a key behind the scenes. So, you know, that's one of those things that, that it's just general business practices. So I think that once we get things rolling, I think we're going to be, I think we're all going to be pleased.
Okay, any further discussion?
All right, so the donated land that Dr. Gargah gave us in your package, you'll see the estimated cost. It's county was $1,022, and city was $286.64, totaling $1,308.97. I think we'd, you want to cover that with the...
Yeah, we finished the transaction today, so it's been filed, the property's been donated. I believe that your last meeting, you approved, so the mayor reporting on the total taxes that would be paid back. But the property, 41.17 acres, is now in the city's name. Well, we actually cut off a little bit.
Cut off a little bit, okay.
Three acres, yeah.
Fair.
Okay. But that was, that was finished, so that property's now in the hands of the city. And assuming in the near future, you guys will make some decisions about what to do with that. Certainly appreciate Dr. Gargah working with the city on that, and that's a really good thing, I think, for the city.
Yeah, okay.
Adam, one thought on that, Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, clear.
I know that that is in District 2, that, that property, is that...
And District 1.
Is it any land lying over in District 1 also?
Yeah, I think, I think it does come around, around District 1.
Because District 2's only got a small portion up there. So I think it's, a lot of it is in District 1.
I can get you a map.
Don't forget me a map for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I will email it to you if I have it on the phone.
Yeah, I got it on my phone that Dr. Gargah sent, so, yeah.
Okay.
So, all right, so last month, it was mentioned about the appointment for the WCCP, and we did do that in January. Their meeting minutes approved that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That didn't happen in January. And if you didn't go back and look at the inform video, your wife's name was mentioned, but Ms. Fisher was the one we put on that board.
And she denied it.
We made a motion in second and put her on the board. If you want to change that back, you got to go back through the procedure.
And she denied it, so we...
Who denied it?
Ms. Lisa, she didn't want to...
No, she did not, she said...
She did, she denied it. She said she didn't want to be on that board. All right.
I'm, I'm not going to...
I withdrew.
His wife withdrew, you didn't withdraw.
I withdrew, sir.
All right.
What tape do you listen to?
GFA loans. Moving forward, GFA loans, we've gotten those GFA loans that we approved to pay off. Kathy's been working to make sure those loans are paid off, so, so those are paid off, all right?
Kathy's been working to make sure those loans are paid off, so, so those are paid off, all right? Councilman discussions, Councilman Colors, all yours.
First one, I want to bring back the WCCP that you just got through talking about, that you are trying to hurry through. We had to get the tape and so you can listen to it for yourself. That did not happen. So I suggest if your wife want to be on the board, let's make the vote legally and vote on it. But I'm not going to accept what you said you put on paper that wasn't on paper.
I didn't put it on paper, so I didn't do the minutes. I didn't do the meeting minutes.
Well, as you know, in that audit, they said minutes are adopted in the audit anyway. So my question is to clear this up.
Okay.
Make that vote right now.
Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that Marion Tutt be on the WCC board.
Okay. With that said, Marion Tutt is currently under a true bill for a felony.
He's not charged.
Well, it's under a true bill for a felony.
That doesn't matter. And, and, well, you didn't even bring that up. That's wrong for you.
I know, I'm just saying.
Of course he's not found guilty.
I know it's not found guilty. It's a true bill. It's a true bill. That means he has to go to court.
First you have to be found guilty. You just want to.
He has to go to court first, so.
But that's my motion, so do I get a second?
Do you get a second?
Marion Tutt?
Yes.
I second.
All right. Any discussion?
Question.
Yeah. When that appointment was made, when the two appointments, was Ms. Fisher and Ms. Bailey, when, when both of those been, when both of them?
We only have, we only have two. Councilman Hill was on it, which he wanted, or Councilman Colors was on it. And Hill, Hill went to it. And then Lisa, we appointed Ms. Fisher and she withdrew. And I said, Ms. Bailey, and she said, yes.
I don't know what tape you listen to. Anyway, that's the question.
All right, going to call for a vote? No. Councilman Fisher, no. Yes. No, Councilman Hill. Anderson?
Would you, would you restate it, please?
Uh, Councilman Colors made a motion to put Marion Tutt on the WCCP board.
All right. And the vote so far was what?
Councilman Fisher, no. Councilman Hill, yes. Councilman Gunner, no.
Got it, it's a may now?
Yes.
Yeah, vote no.
All right. Yes. Yes. So three and three, and I'm not going to vote, so it doesn't go, doesn't pass.
Okay. Next question to the attorney. Anna, Anna Anderson's not here and he's a missed a meeting. So why are we letting him vote?
I'm not aware, under Georgia law, you're allowed to have two meetings where you can attend.
That I do know.
I don't know how many meetings he had.
When I bring back the documentation, we're going to have a problem.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Uh, the community development director and the economic development, I'm going to do that in a second session.
Okay.
Humany Park Instruments and gym equipment, I want us to work with the housing authority, trying to get some, just a discussion to put equipment over at School Street Park, which should be already named Elijah Johnson Park, Councilman Horn, that we don't have to sign for yet. So just putting that up for proposal. If you want to know anything about Humany Park, get with myself or the housing authority with them. In the next meeting, I'm going to make a motion to get some equipment on that.
How many, how many part, what is?
That's just the name of it. That's just, that's just the name of the stuff that.
The name of the equipment?
Yeah.
Is, yeah, one question. Is that, is that the same partnership that the housing authority, Ms. Zina was talking about? What was at a meeting, she was talking about working or partnering with the city to put different equipment?
I think that's it.
That's the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we need to be clear with them that they don't, you know, we will go along with any grant that they write to put equipment over there. Like, I don't like the tone of like, we're not, they're not putting equipment because we're not allowing them to. Like they can write any grant they want to.
That's not, sitting in, in the house all working together, that's all this is about. Who putting it over there? If we can help them to do what we need to do, then that's what we need to do.
Is, is she's asking to partner with, maybe we can get something in documentation?
I asked about all this and so I'll bring it to council and we'll discuss it.
Okay.
And as in next council meeting, I'll be making a motion to vote.
So when we talk about grants and grant programs, are we writing the grant or they going to write the grant?
This is something that the housing authority has done if they need hours of assistance and anything that, whether they wrote the grant or not, it's part of. Yeah, we're not writing a grant.
I think it'd be good if one of District Two, my colleague over here and District One.
That's fine.
Council members work together with that to, to build some, build collaboration.
Yeah, and if you look at it online, it's a, it's an organization that, that assists with putting musical, in place musical type instruments, drums and keyboards and stuff like that. And, and maybe we can do it more than just one park, so we definitely want to look into that in the future. And I've mentioned to Councilman Colors earlier about getting maybe Crystal and involved in it too, so that way she can look and see if she can find some, some assistance with us working on that.
There's a lot of grant opportunity for seniors and youth who works together.
Definitely.
At a, at a designated location, now a different type of apparatus, exercise equipment, things of that nature too.
Okay.
That's all mine. Discussion item, action item be next after Councilman Horn do this.
All right, Councilman Horn?
Yeah, Mary Council, just for discussion, the emergency, so while I was at City Hall when it was ever having, just part of the ed meetings, it was brought to my attention from John Barnett, which is now the, the E Emergency, EMA for the city, that now we have to have a contract. I would say in the past, it's always been done through the EMA, through the county. But he said some things now have changed, but we have to have our own EMA. And I thought there was always a contract between us and the county as far as in a, in a scenario with like Hurricane Helene or anything else that had happened catastrophic, that the county would be, would take over the, the EMA and appoint and monitor, start the assessment and start to contract out whatever services need, need to happen. In that meeting, I found out that now it's changed. So the question I have is, do we have a contract to clean up debris and assess damage at high monitor? So I think in that meeting, he said that we was assessing the damage and we had hired a monitor, but we did not know what was the total cost of the damage done to Washington. Now, in the past, if we didn't have a contract in place, then you have to pay for it. So when I found out that we didn't have a contract, or when I found out that we was now having to hire our own EMA and do everything our own assessment, I want to know how much was the assessment of the damage from Helene? What was the total of that? And the other question was, is it going to be a hundred percent refundable? Is FEMA going to be able to reimburse us a hundred percent of the money that we spent for the cleanup?
Okay. Under, county does fall, have the, the overall visibility and responsibility for the county, for the EMA, that includes the city? That was one of the things that I noticed when, right, well, we noticed, started talking to it prior when we had the, the major water leak and we had to boil water and stuff like that, we started talking about prior. But the county did not have a contract with us to do the, the waste removal and things. So we opted in to do Cirrus, was the county that John, was the organization John Barnett got us with. And since he did such an outstanding job, I wanted to go ahead and put him to be the emergency management person. He has all the training, all the, all the certificates and all that to, to run the emergency management portion for the city. I know we had one before, but it kind of got slack and, and kind of went away and the county just kind of did everything. But when I went to Sam and started meeting after Hurricane Helene, I found out that a lot of the stuff the county wasn't going to do in the city because they didn't have the funds to do that. So, but according to the governor, he said that we were in that category B and then we got bumped up to category A. So we were a hundred percent covered on all these costs for cleanup and remove debris removal. Now that doesn't include the, the stuff that citizens had, you know, they, they'll have to go through FEMA to get that. But all the stuff that people put on the side of the road, all the power lines, you know, all that stuff, we'll get a hundred percent back on that. So the, the cost is still being determined. I think they had a, a conference call today or a teams call today where I think they were supposed to, to work on what the actual costs were in the total cleanup. So I haven't heard that number yet, but I know it's coming soon. So we're just kind of, John's working on that to get it back to us as quick as possible and Will has to, so.
Yeah, it was. And thanks to John, I mean, honestly, I mean, he's doing a great job. I mean, impressive work. He actually got us an extension because, you know, like you told, the contract. Since we weren't a part of it, with his credentials, they gave us an extension to get our application in, so we did qualify. So kudos to him all the way around.
Yeah, I know we brought in, we brought in two power companies and we put them up for probably about maybe like two, maybe three weeks. Extensive, the damage that was done with the electric grid was very significant, replacing these poles and replacing lines. So, you know, I really want to make sure that, you know, we know what that number is and that we get everybody whatever support that they need to make sure we get that money back, to be reimbursed back to the city.
And, and that's what John's working on for us, yeah. And I, once he gets it, I'll have him present it to us as, as council and go over it and tell us exactly what all he did. So, yeah, he did, he did a great job with that, so, yeah. But as I know, the last contract that we had with the county was dated back in like twenty nineteen and it was, I mean, it's just for the EMA director. We pay a, a monthly stipend to him and that's all, really all it was for, was that, so, yeah.
So the county, so we, so with Washington being in Wilkes County, the county said that they didn't have enough money to do any of the work that was inside the county, inside the city limits?
To my understanding, it was that under their cleanup, it, it, it wouldn't cover the city. So we had to do it ourselves and we had to get somebody, our own contracted person to come in and do it. So that's the way they explained it to me, that there, even though we declared a disaster prior to Helene, like the governor asked us to do, it still didn't, didn't generate, I guess, the, the coverage that the county needed for us. So it's, I, I just went with what Sam was telling me on that because he's been doing that for a long time. And, and he recommended Cirrus and we got with them and that's who we got to clean up our, do our cleanup because their, their monitors were, were not going to work with, just, they just wanted to work with the county, didn't want to work with the city in separate. So, so we couldn't, we couldn't work it together, so we got a separate company to come in and do it, basically, so.
But can we find out did rail and Tigno, did they pay for their own cleanup? Because citizens inside the city, just for metal responsibility to taxpayers, you know, citizens inside the city, we pay more taxes.
Yeah.
Than people in the county, so. We need to make sure that we get that same attention. If, if rail, and I know this may be a county conversation, but if rail and Tigno, and not talking about, they're not getting support, but if they got support and they have to pay for it, we have another conversation.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I definitely, I'll call their, their mayors and ask them to what they've done, so.
Yes, sir.
Let's break it up.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, there was a lady in town today and she's actually the one that gets the money back for us. She met with the county today, she's meeting with John Barnett tomorrow. And I mean, it's detailed down to how many generators did you run, how many hours did you run on the generators? So she's trying to get all the money she can back for us. So that's, that's in place for tomorrow with John.
Okay.
There's somebody working on it for sure.
Okay. My question, Will, along the line of EMA director, have we also worked? Have you all had conversation with John in terms of elevating him to that or have his salary changed or what is? What is his status, that maybe?
I've already discussed with him, I've talked with him. We were waiting, so when we first met, he wanted to wait till the payroll study came back. And then, and we haven't met since then. So we're, at this point in time, I think we're waiting for the payroll study to come back because he actually put it on there, all the different steps. But yes, he is in name, he has already been named that and he will be compensated. We just haven't, he and I haven't sat down and discussed it thoroughly because he wanted to wait. But I did give him the option upfront. If he wanted to go ahead and do it, I would, you know, make a recommendation. If he wanted to wait, so he waited.
Okay. Will he be public works director slash EMA director?
Yeah, he'll have both titles.
Yeah, both titles.
Emergency management director, yeah, for the city, right.
And please keep me up to date in that. I mean, I know that's an executive session matter, but I just, I just want to know how that goes.
Absolutely.
And Mayor, one more on my discussion topic. So back in June or July, DCA issued us a letter saying that we was not in compliance of a grant that we had received from them five years ago, like five years ago. Five years ago. The mayor signed, the mayor signed for an extension of that document. And thank you, Mayor, for being on top of that because it saved us from paying that five hundred thousand dollars back. However, I'm asking that we all get a copy of the letter so we all can better understand what DCA is saying that we are not in compliance with. Because I think it was only a one-year extension that they allowed you, that they allowed you to sign. And between now and June, we're going to have to make some decisions on how we get in compliance, or can we get in compliance? Do we pay the money back? So this with Old Gordon Street School with the wings that was knocked down on the back. Me, Crystal and City Administrator last week, we signed a meeting with some consultants that came down from Augusta and they reassure them what they do. They said that's the email one, going to give a dive of understanding what that letter said. How can they assist us when you need compliance? And this was to no cost to the city. It didn't, it didn't cost us one dime for us to be in the room and have a conversation. But I would like for us to get a copy of the letter as soon as possible so we can start devising a plan on how we're going to respond to it.
I know, just to cover that, the only thing I had was the resolution that I signed and that is in your packets. And I, I was pretty sure we put it in your packets back in June or July, I think so. I'm not sure if they got in there or not, but, but I did put that in there. The actual letter, I would have to go back in and look because I think it was an email that they sent to us or it's a letter, the city clerk got it and I don't have the letter, so.
Yeah, I know, I know the letter would have said you, you guys are not in compliance of A, B, and C, X, Y, and Z. That way we could be more detailed.
And I didn't, I didn't see the entire letter.
So we, so we spent some time today working on this very thing, thinking this is perfect timing. But we, the, basically, the way I understand it, without saying, you know, anything incorrect on this, there are two special conditions that we need to meet and we are going to meet those hands down. We're going to meet them. So the worry about having to pay it back, we're going to make sure we do this, what we need to do so that we don't have to pay it back. I've already been reassured of that. I know that Crystal and Miss Anne were both, and like I was saying earlier, Crystal and Anne are going to schedule a meeting. I want to say they want to do it the first of the year. That way everybody's on the same page and whoever wants to come to that can come and, you know, be a part of it. But Miss Anne assures me that she's also working with us on new conditions, that everything's going to be okay and that we're good to go.
What was the two conditions?
The, from what I, from the way that it was written, that we were going to get it taken care of. I know one of the things is the doors, which has already been addressed. I know that the way the doors were opening, you couldn't, it was, whatever the condition was in that grant, there was a problem with it. So those doors have been fixed. Now from that, the other two are, you know, little things that they, that Miss Anne said that once we meet in January, that she is ninety-nine to nine percent confident we will leave the conditions and everything can be okay.
Well, let me ask you that, Ms. Anne get a copy of the letter that?
She has.
That she, she has got of it. Why we don't get a copy of it?
I couldn't tell you that. I didn't, I didn't send the letter out, so.
I know, I requested the letter about three weeks ago.
Who'd you request it through? Who'd you request it to?
I said, emailed to City Administrator. I said, uh, emailed to city administrator.
Okay.
Crystal sent it today, not sent, I haven't even seen the letter, so I didn't even see it.
So, the, the tone that I've received from DCA is that we got the money to do a demo in the event that we were going to bring a developer and develop property. I want to make sure that, you know, they're not saying that they're going to relieve us of that $500,000 obligation, because we're going to fix some doors. Like, they, they was looking for us to.
So, let's be clear, that is not what I said. That is not what I said.
Okay, repeat what you said, because that's what I heard.
All right, okay. That is not what I said. Once we meet the conditions, we will be fine. I don't know, I don't know.
But what the doors in your conversation came in, you said something about some doors?
That's what was, was one of the conditions. Inside of that, that Ms. Ann sent me, was talking about some kind of doors. When we were on the phone today, she said that the doors have been fixed. And I said, yes, the doors have been fixed. That was one of the conditions. So, there's two more special conditions. And once those are done, it's done.
Well, well, I want you to, you, you're mic'd up, so I want you to be very cautious when you talk, that when you say you're 100% sure that we're going to meet those conditions, because we don't know what the conditions are. All right, I, you know, and I asked for this in the email, and I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even brought this up tonight, had I would have got a copy of the email, responded to the email.
That came at five o'clock today, is why I got this.
But when I, you know, if I sent you an email, just respond to the email sent you.
Is that mine?
Yeah.
I'll look back, no, I don't, I don't have, I don't have.
Yeah, you said you're working on, you're giving me a copy of that, and I also sent the, um, text message to, um, Bruce, because I thought maybe he had it, you know, and I CC'd him into the, um, conversation as well. So, it's very, you know, that school is in our district, um, it's very important that we make sure that we get a developer, that we get a project going over there, it's very important that the city don't pay back $500,000 in grants, because if you pay back this $500,000, you ain't get another grant.
Can you get another grant?
Uh, I'd like to comment also, Councilman Mahoney, thank you for raising that concern. Uh, I would also like a copy of, um, that information that's, that been shared. Uh, are we talking about the city portion of this property, or are we just, are we also talking about the URA portion?
Just the city, just the city portion of it. That's where y'all took, they signed back in 2019, I think it was, to do the city, to tear the wings down and, and build on that city property, so, right, not the URA property.
Not the URA side.
Not the URA side, no.
Okay, all right. But I also voiced the same thoughts and concerns as my colleague, Councilman Mahoney, in making sure, if I would like to receive a copy of that information, what need to be done, um, no, we would not like to pay this $500,000 back, but if DCA says that it got to be paid, then that's what has to happen. I know that we was given a 12-month extension, and if I recall, I think that came to us last February or something like that.
July.
July, it was in July?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a couple more months, few more months now, or you're saying?
No, we have to July of next year.
That's what I'm saying, not July.
Yeah, yeah, of next year.
And Ms. Ann, Ms. Ann's going to plan a meeting in January that will go over the last two stipulations, that she said that she was confident it would be done. I didn't say that.
Okay, she said, okay.
Can we also have Tina Hutchinson from DCA come down and, and talk to us too about that letter, because she's our DCA, um, representative? So, I know, and she worked with CBBG grant, that was a CBBG grant that we actually, um, we wrote and got funded for, so I think it'd be great to have her in the room too, to hear the same thing that we, we find out, so if we're going to be fixing it correctly, she can give us guidance or reassurance that. We have DCA's blessing about dealing with the way that Ms. Flores said she want to respond to.
Definitely. All right. All right, moving to action items, Councilman Coler's?
All right, action item, uh, before I get into attorney, would you pull up this section, session 2 dash 67, hiring of the administrator?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you read that, please?
Uh, city administrator shall be appointed by the mayor and council for an indefinite term. The administrator shall be chosen solely on the basis of executive and administrative qualifications with special reference to actual experience and or knowledge of accepted practice in respect of the duties of the office set forth in this division. No mayor or council member shall receive such appointment during the term for which appointed or within 90 days after expiration of term.
Correct. The administrator should be hired by the mayor and council, and that didn't happen. That did not happen. So, I'm making a motion that we rescind this contract until we do it properly. That's my motion.
I believe the motion put before the, um, the board was for the mayor and the attorney to, uh, work out the agreement with him and negotiate the contract, and the mayor to sign the contract, which did, did occur according to the motion made.
No, it wasn't, you were supposed to came back to us and discuss that. We, uh, Mayor.
It, it was given to you, given to you before, um, he was hired, actually hired.
Once again, you need to listen to the video. You was coming back, or Councilman Hill asked you. I would get back with y'all. You did not.
I asked, I asked two separate times, did you want to go in executive session to talk about it? And I also asked if you wanted to put a salary on it. At no point in time did I ever say that I would bring it back to you before we signed that contract. I just said I would get back to you as soon as I had the contract in hand, and that's what I did. I sent it to you, I sent it to you prior. I'll let you answer.
Uh, this is federal law, you, you, that's not going to happen.
You have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to get a second, to renegotiate contract? Do you have a second?
Y'all don't want to renegotiate contract, y'all want to just keep it as is? Councilmen?
I already know we can rescind the contract. Can we rescind the contract?
I don't want to give you a, if I were giving you an opinion right now, it'd be open, and this would be.
Well, we're going to executive session then.
I would want to discuss your legal rights within the executive session.
I, I was going to ask if we go to exec, take this to executive session, would that?
I would also like to request my legal rights. Um, to, to your question, Councilman Mahoney, I could give you an opinion, but I would.
Well, we can't, well, if, if this is going to be a contract, a question about the contract, and the city administrator is here, and it's going to be his contract, then respectfully, actually, when we go into the executive session, that we exclude the city administrator for being in that.
You're allowed to let people in or take people out.
And that way we can get a legal answer to the question.
Respect to the motion, if there's no second, it would not, it would not be on the table, and then you'd go to your next time.
Correct. So, I do not have a second?
I take back my motion, we're going into executive session.
We're going into executive session.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Motion rescinded. All right. All right, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make the motion that we, uh, go in the executive session.
Councilman Hill, can I get a second?
So, second.
Mahoney? Any discussion? All in favor?
Just have two, just two, two items, right?
I have one legal matter.
He's got two.
And I don't know if Councilman.
First nail matter, too, yeah.
He's got a first nail matter. Did, did you bring?
I have one.
You have one.
One, so I'm hearing at least three personnel matters and one legal.
Legal matter, okay. All right. Go into executive session.
All right, make a motion, come back into the session.
I make a motion, second.
Second, Councilman Gunner and Councilman Hill. All right. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Would you like to catch your?
Motion, yeah, Mr. Come back into the, into the open session.
Open session, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I need a motion from your council indicating executive session was held, that